Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for a little wait there and being patient with us. The executive, we had an executive session tonight where council met to discuss a legal matter and a real estate matter. And welcome to the, I think, the 18th public session for the Board of Commissioners, September 12th, 2016. Mr. Commissioner, or Mr. Secretary, if you would please take the roll.
Certainly, Mr. DiMillo.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Holmes is here. He's in the back room. Mr. Bagherty will not be here this evening. Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Leva.
Here.
And Mr. Connell.
Here. For those that can, would everyone please stand and Reverend Mary Jane Kirby from the Union Methodist Church will lead us in benediction.
Good evening, friends. Let us pray. Lord God, as we gather tonight, we pause to remember and to give thanks and to count our blessings. And as we do this tonight on this September 12th, we just pause and take a few moments to lift to you our thoughts and our prayers as we remember September 11th, 2001. We thank you, Lord, for the blessings of this life, and we remember and give thanks for all those who have given so much of themselves on an evening in which we honor and celebrate 100 years in which the police have been serving this community. We give you thanks. We pray for leadership and guidance as the meeting proceeds tonight, that we may be directed by your grace. We pray for sensitivity to one another and to, in thankfulness for this wonderful community. We pray for all those who serve in the capacity of our township. We pray for our residents. We ask for your blessing and direction, that we may live in a way that honors and glorifies you. Bless us now in your name. Amen.
Chief?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you very much. This evening, we are honored to have a state representative from the 163rd, Jamie Santoro, who is going to present the Haverford Township Police Department with a proclamation. If I could also ask the police committee and the chief to...
Now, I know I'm a little late on this. I know June 5th was the real date, but in the middle of budget season, you don't get the benefit of coming out from Harrisburg, down from Harrisburg, to present a citation such as this. But I gotta tell you, I'm truly honored to present Chief Viola and the committee this citation from the House of Representatives honoring the 100th anniversary of Haverford Police Department. The department has grown in so many ways in not just the amount of men and women employed by the department, but in the training. When I read how many hours of training that the department did in 2015, take, listen to this number. 7,790 hours were spent educating our police officers in this township. That is phenomenal. That means they're out learning on how to better serve our community in multiple ways. It's not just to protect. They're here to serve and protect, and they do just that. And they deserve to be honored each and every day. Your men and women put their lives on the line for us, and we truly appreciate that. And I want to thank you for your service. You weren't here all 100 years, were you, Charlie? Okay, all right. Again, I'm not going to do all the wherethes and therefor's, but on behalf of the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we are happy to pay tribute, and that tribute is extremely respectful tribute, to the Haverford Police Department on this special milestone in its proud history. Notes with pride and gratitude, its record of service, which far exceeds those standards of normal ascribed as exemplary, offers best wishes for your future success, and I am happy to transmit this on behalf of the Speaker of the House and the entire membership to you, Chief.
Congratulations. Appreciate it.
Now, you can pose for a picture, absolutely. Stand, stay up here, Doc. Get in the middle.
Can we get in front of the podium?
Oh, I'm sorry. We're being told to get in front of the podium.
Please. It's a better shot. Taking pictures, there's not a camera out there. Thank you for coming, taking the time out of your evening. Item number three, the Township Order Update.
Good evening. I reviewed the disbursements for the period commencing August 9th and ending September 12th. I asked for further explanation on seven items from our township's finance director. All the explanations were first to my satisfaction, therefore, in my opinion, there were nowhere regulars for the period in question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number four, citizens' forum, 20 minutes registered speakers and 20 minutes on agenda items. Mr. Brooks, if you will please come forward representing Haverford Township Day.
Good evening. Chad Brooks, 400 Campbell Avenue. And actually, I'm wearing two hats tonight, so you can be a little out of the lab, too. I'm actually going to speak first about the Grange. I'm your representative of the Grange, along with other gentlemen that are here. And there is a gentleman named Frank McGon, who has written a book called "The Anarchist's Guide to Historic Homes." And he says this, "In these days of an aging traditional audience, shrinking attendance, tightened budgets, increased competition, and exponential growth in new types of communication methods, America's house museums need to take bold steps and expand their overall purpose beyond those of traditional museums." And he gives a guide. He says that the, in order to be sustainable, they should communicate with the surrounding community, engage the community, reimagine the visitor's experience, celebrate the habitation of the house, the length of the house, the history of the house, but also acknowledge that perfect authenticity is an illusion. You can't have it perfect. You want to get people there and enjoying the property. And there's always a tendency, and I see it even in our discussions at the Grange, to wrap everything in cotton batting and put the mothballs in and don't touch it. Now, the houses are fragile, and they have to be respected, but they also have to be used. Otherwise, they die. If they're not used, they won't have life in them. So, over the years, you've seen the Grange open up for Christmas time, and I'll be addressing that. They have summer camps there for children to bring them in. And now, this year, we're going to engage in something completely new for the Grange, very experimental, but we're going to have two beer festivals back to back. On September 23rd, we're going to Grange on Tap. It'll be from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. It's $25 admission. That includes the live entertainment, one drink, and life fair to be provided by McGillicuddy's. The tickets are available at McGillicuddy's or by contacting the Grange. That is, was proposed by Joe Ratstatter. Some of you may know him, and he said he wants to reach out to all those millennials that used to maybe use the Grange when they weren't supposed to, and now as adults, they can legally come and have a night out. And then a very interesting event, September 24th, 7 to 11, the Penfield Civic Association is going to do a homebrew. Now, you know the Oakmont Pub does homebrewing, and it's very successful. It's a lot of fun. They're going to do, it's called Homebrew Hang. And they're going to have a number of homebrewers there and some professional brewers. That is $30 a person, $55 for a couple. You can buy tickets at the door, by the way. Someone asked me that today, tickets are available at the door. Or you can contact the Penfield Civic Association. And there is a Facebook page for Homebrew Hang, if you want to check it out. Obviously, 21 years and older, if you're a homebrewer and you didn't know about it, there's still a chance for you to get in on the action. So, they're the two of the big events, kind of exciting, kind of daring. We're stepping out of our comfort box and trying to get people, use the new amphitheater, and take advantage of what's happening. On Sunday, October 9th, it's the Grange's Open House. They have pumpkin painting, which is very popular every year. And this year, the scarecrow, they're going to do scarecrow decorating, which they didn't do last year, but they're bringing it back, and they're going to offer prizes. They're going to leave the scarecrows up and offer prizes, and the public will be able to participate in that. Then, on October 30th, the Grange will close down. If you're available, if you want to participate in your community, that's all hands on deck. We bring all the Christmas decorations down and begin to set up the rooms. And the decorators have, you know, about three weeks to get things up and running. And right after Thanksgiving, the Grange will open up its first weekend. It's a shortened weekend this year, so we're going to open right after Thanksgiving. And there'll be about six weekends where people can enjoy the Christmas decorations. Their annual Christmas party is December 8th. I've invited the Commissioners before. It's a really fun, great event. Those who have been there, I think, know how much fun it is. It's a real old time. The house has a great feeling. It's a house that is not, even though it's Victorian, it's not a gloomy place. It's a comforting, happy place. And so, I hope that you'll all come out for that. So, that's my spiel for the Grange. And now, I do want to transition to Haverford Township Day. Tim brought in the poster. As you heard earlier, we're doing the 100th anniversary of the Police Department, so that's our theme this year. And it is the Haverford Township Police Department, 40 years, I'm sorry, 100 years serving the community. And it is, it's a great event. It's a great time to celebrate. It's a great police department, one of the safest communities in the state. And think about that contrast, as you read the article about Chester, you know that the, how important good policing is, and we have good policing in Haverford Township. We are this year, because of that, the 5K raise this year, the monies raised, will be donated to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund. And I brought some pamphlets in for the Commissioners for that. The National Memorial is in Washington, D.C. in Judiciary Square. It is a stunning place to visit, especially if you can get there in the first week of May during Police Week, but any time of the year. I've been there in the winter, I've been there in the spring. It's a little off the beaten path, but there's a great museum there, the National Building Museum, one of the hidden gems of Washington. It's in the old Patton Office. It's a solemn place. We have an officer, Norman Barr, who died in 1967 in Haverford Township. He was struck by a drunken driver while directing traffic. He is memorialized in the Walt, and a Smack the Mirror from Upper Darby is memorialized, and many other officers from Delray County. In 2015, this time last year, there were 26 officers that died of Zota gunfire. This year, as of today, it's 39. So, that's about a 40% increase. It's tough, tough statistics now. The police are under fire. The memorial is important, and it gives families a chance to mourn and recognize their loved ones. So, we are, because it is, we're dedicating to the police, we're going to special awards this year, fastest police officer, fastest firefighter, and the best public safety team. So, we've added those awards to this year's 5K. And of course, the day is usual. We'll have a great parade. There'll be food, there'll be vendors. I mean, it really is everything, free rides for children on Brookline Boulevard. There really is no community festival quite like it in this area. There are other community festivals, but I think we really stand out in what we provide to the community. So, please come out, October 1st. It's early this year, it's early as it can get, the first Saturday in October. Please come out, enjoy yourselves, have a great day. And I also brought for the Commissioners another handout, the Grange on Tap. I don't have one for the homebrew, but their Facebook page is easily available.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brooks. Greatly appreciated. Second on the list, Taryn Lynn Elizzi, about the new municipal building.
My name is Taryn Lynn Elizzi, 236 Washington Avenue. Good evening. I have, I'm a little confused, actually, with the tax increase that we're speaking about for the new municipal buildings. Last month, Ms. Cuthbertson came and spoke and said it would be an average medium of $21 to $25 per household tax increase. My understanding is when we decided about two years ago, pretty close to this date, we were borrowing $24,600,000 for option one, because at the time of the meeting, we threw in resolutions, and we added $1 million, then we added $500,000, and then we gave a little bit more to the library. And the vote itself was a little bit confusing. Now, we're speaking, and we're telling the residents of the township last month, and I'm just going to speak about one Commissioner, that he's going to give up a case of Stella O'Toole at the cost of $28. He would be more than happy to give that up for a municipal building for the Police Department. Not one resident came at any one of your meetings and ever said that they did not want a new Police Department. In fact, that was the only building they actually said that was ever needed, made to be made anew. It might be a case of Stella to one, it might be a prescription for somebody else, it might be groceries, and it might be just a food bill. When we talked with Pinoni Associates back in March, we did seven options. He spoke very clearly, in-depth discussions, question and answer periods, survey studies of the township. I actually would like to know how much the cost of that was to the residents of the township. Then, we brought in Reynolds Construction, and we paid them $347,700 for their schematic for which we're moving forward. Again, Ms. Cuthbertson came to one meeting, and we sat and we talked about the average and the median household increase for taxes. $23 million was option one, which was changed at the vote, it went to 24/6. It was 64 or 54. I'm not understanding the $21, $25 increase. We might be speaking about that on just the $12.5 million we borrowed. We're borrowing $10 million more, and we borrowed 9.9 in 2014. All of it not allocated for the municipal projects, but some of it is. It is going to be more than $21 and $25. So, my suggestion to the Board of Commissioners, before we start spouting how much it's actually going to be, let's borrow all the money first and have a little bit more information on actually how much your taxes are going to increase, because it's not the $21 and the $25. It was stated to the public in the paper here, at least for 55, at the median, when we were back in September. Now, we borrowed $12.5, and we're borrowing $10 million more, but we actually state that we're going to build a new building, and we're very thankful to give up cases of Stella O'Toole, which is insulting. I thank you very much for your time, but let's be accurate. You got your building on the corner. Now, tell the residents the truth, how much their taxes are going up.
Thank you very much. Dr. Mike Levin.
Absolutely.
Thank you. To avoid rushing, I would like to take six minutes, Mr. Connell. May I do so?
No, I mean. He wants six minutes.
Six, three, three? Yes. I want to talk to you about residential development at Harvard 7, a topic that I have been discussing for the last six or seven months. The handout I prepared is not one I'm going to read to you in its entirety. However, if you have questions, you can address me at the website, which I have listed below my name. I'll be very pleased to supply you with the answers that you asked for. I'm going to make this fairly rapid. Harvard 7 is a project on Washington Avenue, which is near the Rails to Trails project, which is now going from Manola Road to the YMCA, predictably. Before that, there was a railroad that ran up that road, and it carried up in back of Washington Avenue, and it carried materials from open roads, first thing in Haverford Township. I guess it could be considered one of the golden blocks. Subsequent to open roads, which were lighted, which were lighted with human and road materials, McCandless Fuels Incorporated took over there and provided home heating oil and accepted in return for some of the conversions, clinkers, as well as ash. When the railroad made its last run with products, there was leftover at the site. This included tanks of almost-used fuel oil above ground and below ground. Forgotten, the township did not take responsibility for doing anything with it, and neither did McCandless, the last owner of the property. In 1989, the state, recognizing that these underground storage tanks and above-ground storage tanks were all over the state of Pennsylvania, undertook the Underground Storage Tank and Spill Prevention Act. There were underground tanks on Westchester Pike by the television, by the television retail store. There were underground tanks along the streets in Philadelphia, where sole operator service stations became, came into existence, and all other places. You just didn't know where you were going to find them. The Underground Storage Tank Act is one of the most successful in Pennsylvania's environmental history. It required people to take out their tanks, to dispose of them properly, and dispose of the product that was inside. This occurred in 1989. However, in 1969, preceding this, the National Environmental Policy Act protected us, along with Circle O, which funded it, under super fund. There were strings attached. The strings attached were that a hazard ranking score had to be calculated, and it was, for the YMCA, for the site on which the YMCA stands, for the site which was across the road from National Wood Preservers, which was chemically treating wood with all manner of about 10 or 12 different compounds, many of which got into the ground and still are there. Now, Harvard Square, through all of this, languished at that time to about approximately four or five years ago, when it was repurchased, and the owners said, well, let's do residential properties there. And they proceeded to, they proceeded to get the appropriate papers from the township that would require that. They constructed one residence so far, and found, as the developer turned over the property to the builder, and found, the builder said at one meeting, out the window of his truck, if I'd have known what I was getting into, I wouldn't have. And it was very clear at that time that all he was really doing was the procedure of building a structure, first by escalating the material from the soil where the footprint of the building was, and maybe a little bit more, putting some clean fill in there, and forgetting about all of the contamination that was left afterwards. One home has been built. One home has its foundation. The owners of those foundations, the owners of the building moved in as of August 24th. How they got their permit to move in, how they got their Houston occupancy permit, I'll never know. However, they may have bought into a problem if they accepted this on an as-is basis, because with the indicia of ownership comes the reason for and the responsibility for cleaning it up. So, we'll have to see whether more than one home is going to be built. However, this was, this was passed under the State Department of Environmental Protection using one provision, which was the statewide health standard. After this reached the public in that area, there was a great protest, and the protest was, my gosh, if you're going to do this, if you're going to, if you're going to contaminate the soil and then build properties on it, we're not getting the protections that we should have under the National Environmental Policy Act. So, at the present time, the management of Harvard 7 exhibits a lack of site security, as I pointed out in the last paragraph. There are open pits and holes. There are some with oily residue at the water surface, exposed subsurface soils, which smell, ungraded areas on managed surface site drainage, and exposed electrical cables, all of an unplanned site that is requiring an inordinately long time to complete construction, presumably of all six or seven homes. There has been no public involvement to speak of. The problem lies right here in the township. It doesn't lie with anyone else. DEP has, with all of this pressure, switched to say, well, I don't think at this point we should use the statewide health standard. We should use a site-specific standard. This requires intense planning of the site and a procedure which basically says, we're going to do this before we build.
Thank you, Doctor. Really appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Now, we'll take 20 minutes of agenda items. Anybody that wishes to come up to the podium may speak for three minutes. Anybody on this side of the room? Anybody on this side of the room? Thank you very much. Mr. Brooks, thank you very much for coming forward tonight with your information about the Grange and about the, well, the Haverford Township Day and the two beer fests at the Grange. Dr. Levin, thank you very much for your comments, and the township manager and the solicitor, as well as the assistant township manager have been notified, and they are in receipt of your two-page request here, two-page information. Mrs. Elizzi, thank you very much for coming forward. Your concern about the finances is duly noted, and that as we move forward in the 2017 budget, which we are going into now, we will double-check numbers and what have you, but also, when with those bonds, there are other items operating for the township, such as the library, the vehicle maintenance facility, we had the flooding control, emergency repairs. They all needed to be addressed as well, the 1.1 million for the street projects. So, it's, it covers a multitude of, not just the building, okay? And it was a $10 million and a $10 million that we did. So...
Twelve and a half. You did twelve and a half, and you're going to do 10.
We didn't do twelve and a half. I can't do twelve and a half. But I don't agree. That's okay.
So, if I just make one question. It wasn't, although it was advertised, we didn't do a 12 and a half. It was, it was a 10.
Oh, okay. So, just incorrect information in that.
So, as we go forward...
I've got to correct this. That wasn't incorrect information, for God's sake. We explained this over and over. $12.5 million was in that advertisement, because it needed to be there for purposes of what the price ended up being, whether there had to be an official, whether there had to be a discount or a premium on these bonds. It was $10 million, and the previous lending was $10 million. So, I don't want to hear things like this was misinformation. Everything was put out there.
I'd like to ask one question, because option one last year...
You'll have to come back up to the...
No, I'm not asking questions about option one and option two. The question just came up as to whether we misadvertised. The question just came up as to whether or not there was misinformation about $12.5 million. There was never $12.5 million borrowed, and there hasn't been $12.5 million borrowed. We can't borrow $12.5 million. We can't borrow 12 and a half million dollars. But when we do these things, we have to set this up for purposes of making sure our original issue discount, our original issue premium are calculated into the ultimate amount of money that we can borrow. We are not reexamining options one, or option two, or option three. That is over.
I'm not asking you to reexamine them, sir. I'm not asking you to reexamine them at all. I'm asking if we did not say at the time of the vote, you were borrowing $24,600,000. It would be a yes or a no. And I understand that you cannot borrow, and it is misinformation because it is in the news Delaware County, and the headline does state, "Board Signs Off on 12 and a Half Million Bond Deal." As a resident, I read this. I questioned it. I'm entitled to come and ask these questions. I can see why you're upset, because you made Stella a quah.
Thank you, Mrs. Elizy, for coming forward again.
I'm not upset about that comment. We're going to vote on leaf collection tonight. That's going to cost us more than these two new buildings.
So, we have, on the approval of the minutes, item number five, Mr. D'Amelio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 8, 2016.
Second?
Any discussion? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Leva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number six, approval of the warrants.
Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number nine of 2016, totaling $4,49,837.52, comprising the general and sewer fund payroll for August 11, 2016, in the amount of $714,316.88. The general sewer fund payroll for August 25, 2016, in the amount of $635,282.26. The general fund disbursement number nine of 2016, in the amount of $1,505,441.73. Sewer fund dispersments number nine of 2016, in the amount of $464,036.4. Community development block grant fund disbursement number nine of 2016, in the amount of $45,330.38. Home grant fund number nine of 2016, in the amount of $4,895.75. The capital project fund dispersal number nine of 2016, in the amount of $669,682.6. And a credit card statement ending, I assume, ending August 31, 2016, in the amount of $10,852.42.
Second?
Second by Mr. Wexler.
Mr. President, our township solicitor has gone through these warrants. He said, as he said earlier today, he had a couple of questions, seven or so, that were answered to his satisfaction by our township finance director, and he indicated that satisfaction to us, and I recommend that we approve this warrant.
Thank you, Commissioner. With no further comment, take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Leva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Item number seven, the 2017 MMO.
Yes. Mr. President, as you recall, every year around this time, we have to go through the exercise of detailing and approving our financial requirement and minimum municipal obligation budget. This would be for 2017. It's known as the MMO. In our agenda are three individual entries. One refers to our police pension plan. One refers to our non-uniform pension plan. And the third one is the non-uniform defined contribution pension plan. And we will be... The motion is to accept and certify this 2017 financial requirement and MMO for the police non-uniform defined benefit and defined contribution plans. I'll give you those three exact numbers in a minute. Just had them here in front of me. For the police pension plan, the minimum municipal obligation is $2,770,748. For the non-uniform pension plan, that number is $1,282,916. And for the non-uniform defined contribution plan, our minimum municipal obligation is
Second?
Second by...
Mayor.
Okay. Discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question. So, it gives us an option here of choosing either nine or 10, 10 being more expensive. What's the distinction between the two, the nine and 10? 10 is minimum municipal obligation based upon market value of assets. What's the difference between the two?
Mr. Lewis?
You want to answer it?
Mrs. Cupperson?
Yeah, well, let me give it a shot, and if Amy, if I did it wrong, you certainly come in here. By the state, we have to certify the minimum amount. The last, I think, five years, Amy, five, six years, we've always paid the full amount of this.
The full amount? I mean, in this case, it would be 10 on this worksheet?
Yes. Historically, that's what we budget for. We would pay...
And what's the reason we're going to not pay and doing less?
We're not...
Amy, I'll leave that one up to you.
This is not the payment of the fund. This is the... We have a duty to identify the amount of money, identify it to the state, and commit to paying it.
Right.
We then pay the higher amount, but it's our duty to pay the lesser amount. Now, if we were to have a comet hit the township sometime in the next two months, and we wanted to save the million or so dollars between number nine and number 10, we would not have committed ourselves or have an obligation to pay more than what the state minimally requires. But for the last several, gosh, my two terms, anyway, we've gotten away from smoothing, we've gotten away from other mechanisms that the state has allowed in the past to try to literally smooth over some of the fluctuations in the market and the obligations that have fallen on municipalities. The problem is, we concluded that that was really just a function of kicking the can down the road, and the sooner we took on the higher obligation, the more quickly we'd get out from under the, you know, quickly get out of the hole. And certainly, we are situated better than a lot of our similarly situated townships in the state for that reason. But we do distinguish between the minimal amount required by the state and the amount we ultimately pay, because we do think it's better fiscal discipline for our board for the future.
Do you want to add to that? And I guess my follow-up question...
The only thing I was going to add is, the reason you want to certify number nine is because that is what you're publicly saying you are going to include in the 2017 budget.
So, that will be the number in the budget?
Well, as Commissioner Holmes said, we always attempt to do line 10, which is based on market debt.
So, we're going to try to do 10, yeah.
So, the budget that's presented to you in the preliminary form, we're going to try on the management level to show you with an inclusion and funding at the line 10, which is the higher number.
Right, okay.
But we don't want to do that right now, because we don't want to pigeonhole ourselves into that if our budget won't allow it.
Right, okay. And just for point of reference, the MMO, the full number, is actually less than we did last year. It looks like by about $9,000.
Like a net $8,600, I think, down.
Right. That's right.
Amy, while you're there, can you also explain, good for the commissioners as well as the audience and the public and the community, we've been doing this for a number of years. How has benefited our stability of our pension program?
We have. We are evaluated by the state as to the health of the pension plans, and it's just a very easy way to show what this effort has done and how it has benefited us. In 2017, which is, we are evaluated every two years by the state. In 2017, we had a combined funding level of about 67% between the civilian and the police plan, and at our last valuation, we were up to 74.7.
You didn't mean 2017. What did you mean?
2015?
Okay.
2015. So, you can see, that's a big jump between 2007 and 2015. So, hopefully, we're going to keep approaching that 90 or 100% goal that we're trying to get to.
How does that put us in comparison to other townships and similar sizes?
Well, we're at a funding level of one. Every municipality is assigned a funding level, and we're one. The highest you want to be is zero. That means you're good.
Fully fine, yeah.
I think we're in a good spot. We can do better, and we're going to keep doing what we're doing to try and get there. But I think we're probably middle of the road.
You said in 2007, we were at what level?
2007, it was combined, the police and civilian combined, 67.3% funded.
And now it is?
Now, we're 74.7.
Okay. You said 2017 instead of 2007.
That's confusing, everybody. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it just was a little confusing, because I'm like, wait a second. 2015 is this number, 2017 is a much lower number, so.
2007 and 15.
Thank you, Amy.
Any further discussion?
I know whether Larry had... Larry, do you have anything else to add? You were going to say something.
The only other thing, in addition to all the great job that Amy's been doing to do this funding, another step that we did to become more aggressive to get the pension more stable was also we eliminated the defined pension program a number of years ago. So, those employees are grandfathered, and that's why we're still paying, and that's why we now have the defined contribution plan.
All good work from Amy.
Anything further? There being none? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Leva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number eight, the drone ordinance. Mr. D'Amelio?
Chairman, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-15, 2016, establishing regulations for the operation of radio-controlled or uncontrolled model aircraft, rockets, or other flying objects in a township of Havreford. And this was under drones, first reading.
Where is it? It's in the revised agenda.
It's only revised agenda. It should be up on your computer.
Should be number eight, for the revised. Do you have it?
I need a second. Second.
Mr. Wexler? Comment? Discussion?
President? No.
I don't see the language in here that we talked about at the work session about privacy. Are we going to address that?
Yeah, I have not done that yet. I mean, what I had thought we were going to do, and maybe it was my mistake, was that we were going to try and refine this once we introduced it, before we advertised it a second time, before we made the advertisement, and before we read it a second time. So, I did not do the changes yet, because I was waiting to hear anybody else had any other changes. There was actually some suggestions that were made by some members of the board about maybe, you know, whether it should even be done in an ordinance form, or whether we should do a, you know, look into resolution-type provision that would, you know, make it as part of the parks, or an ordinance to make it as part of the parks, you can't have it as part of the parks, similar to how you can't have alcohol in the parks and those things. There was a number of suggestions that I got, and so I didn't make any of them yet, until we had further chance to discuss it.
If we're going to do that, and you're going to make substantial changes, would a second reading be sort of irrelevant, anyway, because we'd have to re-advertise it as a first if there's substantial...
I don't think so. I think I'll have to double-check the end to be sure, but I think that as long as we make the changes before we advertise for the second reading, because there is no advertising for the first reading, so as long as we make the changes before we advertise for the second reading, then we're okay.
Well, and I guess I would just like to...
Second reading had to be...
Mr. Holmes?
I'm sorry. Never mind.
I mean, I guess my concern was, and I think I raised the issue of whether we just wanted to do this as a park issue, is that I believe when our council was asked to draft this, it was more of a, "What can we do about the drone issue?" And now, if we're going to vote on it, the issue is, "What should we do about the drone issue?" And the way this is, number one, you accept that there's a drone issue, and I'm fine with that. But then, we have prohibition of it on all township property and on all township roads and PennDOT roads. So, we're basically banning drones from our township at this point. And I think there's a very real question as to whether we, as a township, want to take that on, when the FAA at this point is merely asking individuals to register their drones. Drones are not going to decrease in sales, and my concern is that we're essentially passing an ordinance that, much like a cellphone or a computer, is going to be out of date within a year, a year and a half. And we're sort of banning something and taking on the responsibility. We're asking our police department to take on the responsibility to monitor something, and whether we want to be doing that, I think, is a very real question that we have to ask ourselves, beyond the issue that Mr. Gentili has talked about at parks, at our soccer fields. You know, there's a very real concern that we don't want somebody hovering it over a soccer game and then coming down and hitting a kid. But I think there's already provisions in just general rules that if a drone fell in the middle of a road, we already have laws that are designed to deal with that, and it might not be something that we want to take on as a township and ask our police force then to monitor. So...
Yeah, I thought, when this refers to township property, we're talking about township-owned property, right?
The parks, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't... I'm not in favor of us passing an ordinance that we already have serious problems with and are anticipating making significant changes to it. I like the idea of kicking this to parks and rec right now, because we are concerned simply about... I mean, we are... Our biggest concern, and the one we're addressing right now, is that these drones were appearing or perhaps crashed in one of our parks during, you know, a soccer game or something that was going on.
I think privacy is also an issue that we have to...
But privacy is trickier, because, I mean, unless we're going to purport to regulate these things in the entire 10 square miles of Havreford Township, then you are... I mean, then, A, I don't know if there's any kind of state laws to preempt this, or does anybody's got a right to fly drones around. But you are then putting on the police a pretty significant duty to be patrolling, you know, all the private property in the township to see whether any kid who's flying his drone in his own backyard is crossing a property line and too close to somebody else's window. So, I mean, putting... It is already against the law to arm a drone with a camera and go into somebody's yard and look in their windows. That is against the law. I mean, there are privacy statutes already that, same way you can't, you know, climb and look in your neighbor's window, or, you know, do things like that. I mean, there's already invasion of privacy laws that are out there, that using a drone instead of just, you know, peeking through a window doesn't make a difference. But until we're ready to regulate the use of these, literally in backyards, I think we should stick to addressing their use in our parks.
If I could maybe... I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's a motion on the table with a second, and we either follow through with it, or we can table it.
I'd like to make a comment. Do we have a second already?
Yeah, we do have a second.
And discuss it. I mean, he just wants to make a comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, trying to get across.
Floor, George.
Thank you. I have to disagree with my colleagues. I think that this drone ordinance is probably the first in the municipalities, surrounding municipalities. But you know what? They're becoming cheaper. They're everywhere, and, you know, my concern is going to collide. Two of them are going to collide or hit a vehicle, and we have a problem. It's... They're getting... There'd be so many of them everywhere, and they're coming down in price every day. I think this is a safety issue. I do believe this is a safety issue, and it's something we need to undertake, in my opinion. That's just my opinion.
And I think right now, we have a language concern on it? Is it...
Can I make a comment?
Now, it's a scope concern. I mean, what really are we trying to accomplish?
What I'm trying to accomplish, this is something that myself and Mr. Danny and Chief I all have been working on for several months. Because of those issues, we ultimately, our goal was to not, to limit or prohibit the use of these type of devices, not only the drones, but radio-controlled airplanes and other radio-controlled devices in our parks and township property because of those particular incidents. So, if you believe if it's going to make it easier, we could certainly, you know, guys can consider tabling it, and myself and the chief and Mr. Danny can go back and talk about it, and how we can incorporate it into the parks' policies and see how that looks out.
Yeah, Larry, that kind of makes sense to me. We prohibit golfing in the parks. We prohibit other uses, so it makes sense to put it in...
We prohibit golfing in the parks, we prohibit other uses, so it makes sense to put it in there. And then also gives the Parks and Recreation Department the leeway, as Mr. D'Amelio points out, these things are getting popular and everything, we might then have days where we might have permitted use of those things for a contest or some type of drone or flying thing, like using the reserve for the aerial planes that fly that some of those people, you know, be an excellent use of the park facility someday. So it probably does belong in our park rules and regulations and be enforced by the police that way under those things. And then as it gets bigger and more popular and the FAA weighs in, as the other people gently point out, then the scope of it, we can then manage as far as a general ordinance and rule, but I think it's very manageable to do under our park regulations right now.
I certainly, yeah. What I don't think we should be doing is fining people a thousand bucks for flying a model airplane in one of our parks. I mean, we've got to set up reasonable, you know, time, manner, and place restrictions, but, you know, we've had, what, a drone land on a soccer field and now we're going to fly a plane again?
We've had incidents where they're actually flying over. We have had two crash in parks. Luckily, they weren't occupied at the time, the parks, but they're becoming very popular for families to take them to ball games, football games, flying over populated areas. They're dangerous.
Yeah, I know, trust me. Flying, you know, shooting off a rocket or flying, you know, a remote-controlled airplane over a football game or a soccer game while it's going on is idiotic. I'm all for that. But you walk out on a November day to one of our parks and you're one of seven people there in a two-acre park, and you want to fly your drone or fly your, you know, fly your remote-controlled airplane, or your kid just got his remote-controlled helicopter that he got for Christmas, we're going to make this a, we're going to make this a criminal offense. I mean, I'm not for that.
I don't know if I agree with you, Mr. Holmes. Like, I don't believe they should be flown at all because even if there's four people, they're dangerous. And I know it may be that one person who's actually walking down the side of the park and it actually crashes and strikes that particular person.
I'm curious how many people have actually been hurt by, like, flying baseballs at a game as opposed to how many people have been hurt by drones or remote-controlled aircraft. I mean, I'd really like the data.
Larry, a lot of times you're watching the game, you know if foul ball's going. Sometimes. There are times you don't, but you're there.
You don't when you're in a place that has three games going on in three different directions. So field one, you're keeping an eye out, and field two, you get in the back of the hat.
You can hear the sight and sounds of a baseball game, but you can't sometimes with a drone.
I have no interest in outlawing these things in all of our parks. I do have an interest in regulating them and in, you know, in setting up, I mean, it's very simple right now, we could say, it's against the law to fly a drone over a Havreford Township park while Havreford Township-sponsored sporting events are going on there. I have no problem with that. But this ordinance right now outlaws flying any one of these things in any one of our parks 24/7, 365 days a year. I'm not in favor of that.
What's your comment?
Mr. D'Amelio?
I think there's two things. One is, Bill and Larry, when my son Chris was nine years old for Christmas, he got a remote-control airplane, we went over to Steel Field and flew it around. You know, nobody was around. We also had an incident at Freedom Playground where one of these crashed and caused people to get upset. So it kind of goes both ends. For what it's worth, this is something that's being discussed a lot in municipalities, a lot. My son was an intern this summer, goes to law school, and he was down in Philadelphia, and he went to a session where it was being discussed. And apparently, most of what he told me was that they learned there that most of the ordinances passed by municipalities were going to be ruled unconstitutional. And the reason being that the townships don't have the right to airspace. That's not their right. What he said, he learned was that what they could do was regulate where they take off from and where they land. My thought would be, listening to all this, that perhaps we could say it's okay if they have a permit, you know, or designated days, as Bill said, you know, some way to allow for that Christmas Day when there's nobody on Steel Field and you want to try it out, or some version of it, or we differentiate where you can, when you can, some version of that perhaps. But I think, and again, I'm no lawyer, there's a number of lawyers here, so, but my son said that the general statement he learned this summer was that almost all the municipalities that had passed these, they would not pass the test of constitutionality.
So you're saying we should...
I think it's worth taking your time.
So we should table this and do a little more research, is what you're saying?
It sounds like it.
Okay.
Is your son aware of any municipalities that have established a working, you know, framework for regulating this stuff?
He's up Vermont now, so I don't know, I don't know of any. But I could certainly, you know, ask in my profession if people have done it.
Right, in your world, you'd know this, honestly.
I can put it out there and see if I can find something that...
Commissioner Siegel?
Yeah, well, a few things. You know, they're regulated in the state parks, there's only six parks that allow them in limited areas. Pittsburgh has a drone ordinance, East Goshen has one that's remarkably similar to this except it has additional language about flying over private property. They're being passed all over the country. But Pennsylvania, the state parks already significantly regulate them, and I'm just not sure, you know, I don't, I couldn't vote for this ordinance in its current form. I think we need an ordinance and would support one, but not, I think the language needs to be changed because of the whole thing with rockets and things. Reminds me of when I was a kid, a zillion years ago, and we used to fly the Estes rockets in the parks. And even if they are still...
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with that, and I agree with some of what Tim is saying about permits if we have to, and maybe even special days, so I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Well...
If I could make one more comment before we table it?
No, you can't. Once it's been seconded, you have to have a vote.
Right. And do we not also...
Make your comment while they're arguing about it.
Save it to the end.
I follow the rules, Larry.
Oh, nice one! All right. Yeah, we like rules.
Okay, we have, a motion to table, and a second motion, and a second, it was seconded by?
Commissioner Lewis.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
So we just call the roll then?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes, to table.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes, to table.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, to table.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes, to table.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes, to table.
Mr. McCloskey, want to make his comment?
Sure.
No, I'll wait.
Okay, because I was going to make a comment about kites, too.
All right.
Kites are like the, this is the wireless of the kites.
My point was going to be that at least three commissioners have talked about flying rockets as kids, and the reality is that drones aren't rockets for kids today. So we need to keep that in consideration, too, when we're making up these rolls.
Item number nine?
Four? Four commissioners.
Item number nine, P-19, 2016, for a second reading for traffic ordinance.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-17, 2016, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Special purpose parking in front of Seven Waverly Road, rescind sticker parking only Buck Lane North Side from Railroad Avenue to Pamir Road, and establish parking of vehicles prohibited at all times, Buck Lane North Side from Railroad Avenue to Pamir Road.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Aliva. Comments? There being none, take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, item number 10, the acquisition of property.
Okay, Mr. President.
Commissioner Aliva?
Motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-18, 2016, authorizing the acquisition of a portion of property at 328 Spring Road, Havertown, PA, in the amount of $252,000, subject to the review and acceptance of the related contracts by the township solicitor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio. I would like to bring a note that that description is not a portion of, so those two words would be taken out. It's an acquisition of property.
Okay.
And a portion of the property.
Okay, we can do that. I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Mr. You're okay with that? Any further discussion? There being none, take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McGarvey's not here. Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Great job, man.
Thank you. I think probably McGarvey has a phone call in. Item number 11, P-19, 2016, for a second reading on traffic. That's the Pamir one.
Motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-19, 2016, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Sticker parking only on the west side of Pamir Road from Old Buck Road to Buck Lane 24/7. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times on the east side of Pamir Road from Old Buck Road to Buck Lane.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wexler. Comment?
Yeah, the only thing is, I'm not sure why there's a draft settlement agreement in the agenda as part of that ordinance. I know there's been litigation over it, but I don't think they go together.
I don't know. Jim would have to answer that.
Right behind the ordinance is a draft agreement to settle, and what I received...
Well, it's on the agenda, it's just in our packet of materials.
Oh, okay. But still, okay. I don't know why it would...
It ought not be shared.
Right. That's, okay.
There being nothing further, take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio? Stepped out. Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, item number 12, ordinance P-20, 2016. This is the first reading for traffic.
Okay, Mr. President.
Mr. Aliva?
Motion to adopt the following, motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-20, 2016, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Modification of parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times on Lanark Avenue from west, from Langhorne Avenue to Rodman Avenue. The parking of trucks in excess of 8,000-pound trailers, semi-trailers, or other commercial vehicles is prohibited at any time upon any designated highway or parts, therefore, except as provided in subsection 175, 28A. Special purpose parking zones in front of 320 Glengarry Drive, Havertown, PA, and establish parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times to include the west side of Woodley Road from Hillcrest, from, I'm sorry, from west Hillcrest to 1.60 feet north.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Discussion? There being none, take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva and Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, respectively. Item number 13, ordinance P-21, 2016. This is chapter 30 for the pension and the employee benefits. First reading.
Mr. President, I move we amend chapter 30, pensions and employment benefits, to reflect changes regarding the police pension plan negotiated as part of our current collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Siegel. Comment, discussion?
Just maybe Larry could summarize some of the changes, or Amy could?
It's the, it's, just one section is for the retirement option in A-2. For us, again, just housekeeping, it's for officers hired on or after January 1, 2016, and any lump sum payment received by the officer upon termination of employment will be excluded from the pension definition for pension purposes.
That's the only, is that the only?
I believe, oh, and in death and disability, number right below that on your attachments, for non-service connected disability for officers hired before January 1.
Okay. So they have any financial implication, those changes?
I'm sorry?
What financial implications do those changes have?
We actually save money, it actually goes to our advantage. For example, in the first one, if I, and Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, it's that any payments that are paid out that are not going to be calculated in their pension contribution. Correct, Amy?
That's the key.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? There being none, take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes, item number 14 is a resolution 2025, 2016, as for PennDOT's township agreement for the electronic access.
President, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2025, 2016, authorizing the township manner to execute all documents which authorize electronic access to PennDOT systems. Agreement was approved by PennDOT on May 25, 2016.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Discussion, comments? There being none, take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, item number 15 is a resolution 2020, 26, 2016. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution number 2026, 2016, approving the transfer of a liquor license number R-4834 into the township of Havreford.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio. Comment?
Mr. President, this is, this involves the, involve...
Carlino's?
Business in the sixth ward on County Line Road, Carlino's seeking and getting a liquor license in order to be able to sell beer and wine and some spirits in their shop. They have included an agreement with the township, a separate agreement with the township that limits their hours to 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. at night, so it will not have late hours that the bars in the neighborhood have. The purpose of that being in the side agreement as opposed to in the resolution is that this has to be enforced by Haverford Township. The Liquor Control Board itself does not enforce separate agreements like that, other than the law that would apply to everybody that has a liquor license. So for anybody thinking there's something, you know, unusual or nefarious about a separate agreement involving, you know, any other conditions that are associated with that, it has to do with the fact that the LCB resolution has to be kind of as sterile as it is because the LCB takes no position on any local...any local restrictions. So that was negotiated at our local level and certainly has my agreement and I think the agreement of the rest of the board.
I would just add that I think Carlino's has been a great neighbor for a long time.
Oh, terrific place.
I think it's been a great addition, so we're pleased to support this.
The work, the recent work to expand the place, it's just really, it's really terrific. And everybody in Lower Marion who goes there really loves going there, yeah.
It's part of our Haverford Renaissance.
Whoa, 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 I go there.
I know.
I go there.
We all go there.
It's a lot of Haverford Township residents that go there.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's part of...I mean, look, there's been extraordinary work by our Public Works Department, working on that entire corridor there on County Line Road between Ardmore Ave and Wynwood. Certainly Carlino's has invested a lot of its own capital into this and take a great deal of pride as, you know, an important Haverford Township business, important for that neighborhood and important for all of us, and it's really driven a lot of the rest of the renewal we've done in the block. Totally agree.
All right.
That's done, this paperwork. Any further? There being none? You had a moment there?
Yep.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
D'Amelio, I'm sorry. Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
He's off his game tonight.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Congratulations. Item number 16, resolution number 2028-2016, Haverford Township Day.
Mr. President?
Mr. Oliva?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2028-2016 designating Haverford Township Police Department's Chief John Viola to execute any and all documents with P.A.D.O.T. and be responsible for the safety and welfare of residents utilizing state highways on Haverford Township Day, Saturday, October 1, 2016.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wexler. Further discussion? Comment? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number 17, 2016-2017 for the salt contract with Public Works and...
Mr. President, make a motion to award the 2016-2017 salt contract to the Eastern Salt Company Incorporated in the amount of $56.43 a ton delivered, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Oliva. Comment or discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question for Larry. Just curious as to what we have on hand, if any, in terms of salt and how this is priced compared to what we paid last year.
We are fully stocked with our salt. That's something we do. The only thing that we're actually not fully stocked with every year is our solar salt, what our solar salt within the next few weeks to get stocked up. What the difference is, the main salt is obviously our...is the agreement that you're approving right now, the Eastern Salt Company, which is, I believe, close to $6...almost $6.42 less than last year.
Less than last year?
Yeah, less than last year. We always, always stock up fully.
So we're full, we're full right now?
We're gonna have...I hope we don't, but we're gonna have several major storms from now until December, we're stocked up.
How much over budget were we last year, just on salt?
I don't believe we were over budget.
And we were about the only place that didn't run out of salt.
Yeah.
But what the solar salt is, and that'll be the next thing you'll vote on, the difference is, we use the solar salt with as a cleaner and a softer salt. We use that to make our brine solution. We purchased a quantity of that, again, we started a consolidation, or consortium of townships, Haverford being the first, we own the brine equipment, and we work with Marple and now Upper Darby Township. We make all the brine, and then all three townships share in the costs of...
We mark it up and sell it to them?
Yeah, absolutely.
Really? All right, there be no further discussion on number 17. Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Number 18, now we will discuss the solar salt contract.
President, make a motion to award the 2016-2017 solar salt contract to Chemical Equipment Labs of Delaware Incorporated in the amount of $69 a ton, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Oliva. Any comment? Nope, because you already made it.
$12.75 less than last year per ton.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
What do you attribute that to, Larry?
I think it's just supply and demand.
Just too much supply?
There was a very mild winter.
When it snows, it goes up.
No further discussion, there being none, take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number 19, removal of leaf materials, two-year contract.
Chairman?
Mr. D'Amelio?
I'd like to make a motion to award the removal of leaf material contract to American Bio Soils and Compost in the amount of $17.50 a ton, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Uh, Mr. President?
Lowest responsible bid, okay. Yes, was seconded by, I'm sorry, whom?
And Mr. Wexler.
Mr. Wexler and Mr. Holmes.
Uh, two-year contract, Larry?
It is.
What, is that what we normally do?
We do. We actually were late last year with it, so we advertised and had to bid it out, and it was...it came in at the same price.
And that is, these folks, they do everything from collection and remove it, or our collection...
No, we actually do all the collection. If you remember historically, we would collect the leaves, bring them to our facility, or years ago, prior to us doing our own composting program, we would collect the materials, take them and transport them to Highland Avenue down in Chester. That price, what is it, several years ago?
The cost per ton down in Chester?
$35 a ton.
$35 a ton?
It's just the tipping fee, that's not the cost to travel, fuel, vehicle maintenance. We obviously attempted to do our composting in-house for a few years, which was, well, unfortunately, I didn't go over too well on the public, but then we entertained, and we have this company where they will come and collect the materials. So we bring all the materials to our yard with Marple, actually does it with us now, and Newtown Township, and we share in any of the costs. They obviously pay their fee. We set up the different columns. We bring them to our yard. Every day trucks come in from American Bio Soils, picks up the leaves, take them to their facility, and pots down Pennsylvania.
Where do we get the machines to pick up the leaves?
We own, we purchase all that equipment, the big leaf vacuum machines.
Vacs?
Some of them, I believe, the last one we purchased, we got in it with a DEP grant, but they roughly, I believe, anywhere from $40,000 to $50,000, you know, the equipment, but they have a fairly long life expectancy, about 10 years, I think.
The front-end loader, that was outfitted, that's a custom scissors?
Yeah, it's something that our mechanics did in-house. We actually have two big loaders, all hands on deck during leaf season, unfortunately. So we use trash trucks, approximately 10 big vacuum machines, front-end loaders, and every single person that we have in Public Works.
Do the Bio Soils folks in particular, they have to pick up leaves. Can they take biodegradable bags or just the leaves?
No, just the leaves.
Have we ever priced what it would cost to pick up bags?
They won't accept them because it actually jams their equipment.
This company?
Yes.
Are there other companies that take the bags?
Not that I'm aware of, but they would have bid it. There's only two companies that actually bid it.
Anything further? Well, we can't go back and forth, but yes, sir, that, it's just what it is, the paper bags.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I...
Do this every year.
Do this every year. I'm referring to the tall, you know, multiply paper bags that, you know, various folks use and that a lot of people use for our guard waste.
Now, we allow our residents to put them out during leaf season, we just empty them out.
They're giant bags, but they're not bags from Giant.
I gotcha. I mean, inevitably, the 6th Ward gets like the first vacuuming, so like I break my arm every year raking my leaves because I fall out of the tree while I'm doing it. I mean, there's not a leaf on my ground when the first one comes around, but that happens to everybody.
The first, first, second, and third wards are the first.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Always.
Talked about this in length, didn't we, at the work session?
I don't remember that.
I wasn't at the work session, I'm sorry, Mr. D'Amelio. I'm sure you didn't talk about bags and getting rid of the leaf vacuuming at the work session.
It's something that we've talked about every year. So can we move forward?
You talked about dogs for about 20 years till we finally did those, so are you suggesting that...
I'm getting...
Don't we got the dogs, Larry, come on?
I'm getting bags under my eyes.
Aren't you pissed at dogs?
So there being no further comment, will we please take the roll? Next gets the square.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes. These guys are taking them.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number 20 is the appointment of township independent auditor.
Mr. President, I move we appoint certified public accounting firm of Barba Cane Thornton and Company, LLP, as the township's independent auditor for a three-year term covering the fiscal years ending 12/31, 16, 17, and 18.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel.
Mr. President, as you, as folks may recall, it is a requirement of the law that we rotate and move away from our auditors at least every, either every three or every six years. So we just unfortunately had to terminate our contract with our previous excellent auditors. It is the recommendation of our township finance director that we retain Barba Cane Thornton and Company, and I agree with that recommendation, recommend that we appoint them.
There being nothing further, take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number 21, Mr. Oliva, for the support letter.
Motion to authorize the township manager to approve payments for proposal presented to the Board of Commissioners on August 8, 2016.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lewis.
The HPD recommendations that we went over at great length at the last Commissioners meeting, and we allowed the public to give input over the last 30 days from the last meeting, so I think we're good.
Yeah, we certainly had plenty of...I mean, our group met to review the recommendations. Certainly all thought this was a good idea.
Yep. Okay.
There being nothing further, take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes. Item number 22 is a comprehensive plan motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to direct township manager to pursue a multi-municipal comprehensive plan utilizing the budgeted fund allocation.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Oliva. Comment? Discussion?
Was this...
Mr. Holmes?
Did we talk about this last week at the...I mean, I wasn't here at the work session.
We talked about this a while ago.
Well, we've never talked, I mean...
We talked about it in our meeting with the representative that gave that presentation.
Right. And was last week at the work session was this discussed?
Yes.
Multi versus solo, I mean, I...
I don't remember.
I didn't...I'm not sure to date I understood the benefit of doing the multi-municipal, and I'm a little worried considering how long it takes one municipality to accomplish something to actually try to get three or four to line up.
Laurie, I'll explain it more in detail.
What up, do you want to say something?
I'm happy to. We did retain...consult with a land planner...
Use those words carefully.
Consult with a land planner on the pursuit of a comprehensive plan. His recommendation was that we partner with at least one additional municipality to take advantage of an economy of scale, to look at shared land use opportunities, as well as additional funding availability for a MAP grant. The proposal simply is to join with at least one, and we did have a warning from another. I did consult with an additional land planner who advised that it's very workable to have one partner municipality. If you get into multiple partner municipalities that don't have a shared zoning code, it could be problematic. Be careful not to cross county lines if it was possible to avoid problems there with different county planning agencies. But the overall recommendation was made by the committee, the zoning and planning committee, to pursue a multi-municipal plan.
Aren't I on...am I on the zoning and planning committee?
Yes.
Our committee recommended that we do a multi-municipal?
You agreed to it, that night you did.
I didn't agree to a multi, did I?
You did. Sure you did.
Which municipalities are we...
Yeah, which one are we talking about?
Well, right now we've been discussing with Radnor Township and confirmed today their continued interest in pursuing multi-municipal. I'm happy to reach out to Marple. I just know that they're engaged in a lot of zoning issues right now, but I'm happy to reach out to Marple.
No, no, look, we've talked about this, and I don't have any interest in making this more difficult. Of all of our neighboring municipalities, Radnor makes the least sense for us. I mean, how big is our shared border between us and Radnor? What do we have, I mean, as opposed to...I mean, we don't want to cross county lines, so we're not talking about Lower Marion. I don't know whether anybody wants to do anything with Upper Darby, but what do we have in common with Radnor that would make this work, as opposed to just two, like barely touch, right? I mean, it's like two...it's like Oklahoma...
Actually, the government prefers that you merge or try to do a multi-municipal plan because of grant money and whatnot.
Yeah, they're more likely to give money to multi than they would single plans. That's...that is according to, that's not my word, that's according to...
We talked about that, it just didn't make sense to me that it would be Radnor, because it just has so...
We asked her, the committee, you were on, asked her to look at the Radnor.
Mrs. Whatup, you...I see you started to move your mouth.
I do want to say that we do have shared facilities. We're both members of the RHM, which is the sewer authority. We both share in hopefully redevelopment efforts of Haverford Road, which has been the subject of a specific business district plan for Haverford Township. It's also the subject of a detailed analysis by DV RPC. We share a lot of public transportation facilities, the regional rail line. We have some combined infrastructure along, I guess, Landover Road and County Line Road is Lower Marion Township, Landover Road, and we have some recreational...
Where do we share with Radnor on Haverford Road?
Where Wawa?
Wawa, by the hospital.
Wawa, by the hospital.
Wawa is completely in Radnor, isn't it? Don't we turn on Landover?
But all of 320, Foxfields, all of that's Radnor. Most of the, no, Foxfields, no, half of Foxfields is Radnor. I mean, my whole ward, the whole sort of what I'll call the right side, is Radnor, and so is a good portion of the fifth.
My question would be, if we're...
The residential part of it, right?
Right.
Where do our business districts touch?
If we're looking at a comprehensive plan, I think we, in addition to Radnor, we really have to look at both Upper Darby and Marple. I look at what's going to develop on Westchester Pike, and if we're going to share zoning code, well, it's Marple.
I said Upper Darby, too.
Yeah, I said Upper Darby, Westchester Pike, and Marple. I'm agreeing with you. Just let me finish.
Telling you that we, you're right.
I know, but we're talking, the only ordinance, the only municipality we've talked about, discussing and have done preliminary work with is Radnor. We share a long border, and we're going to share shopping centers, the intersection, the fiber tie-ins along Westchester Pike with both Upper Darby and Marple. I think that development at the Blue Road is really going to impact this township far greater than anything on Landover Road will do. And if we're going to share zoning codes and shared land use, then I'd like to see the zoning along Westchester Pike be coordinated with Marple as it develops into a business district, it's going to want to obviously push up further us, or we're going to fall behind. So I think it's a great idea to go multi-municipality, but that's one that really would be key for us, I would think.
Right. One of my concerns since this has been brought up is it's been Radnor, 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 and that's been pushed, and I just don't know where that's coming from, whether first it was a good idea to do multiple municipality, or it was Radnor was starting something, let's hop along for the ride. I mean, I want to make sure that if we're going to do this, and if we understand that it works best if you team up with one other partner, I want to team up with the right partner, not just the one who will have us.
Well, let me say that Radnor Township has been responsive to our inquiries. I did make a phone call to Marple Township. I've not heard back from Marple Township on their interest. I'm happy to reach out in writing or to reach out to their board. You know, I'm not trying to preclude the involvement of other municipalities. I'm just looking for direction, whether this board wants to pursue its own comprehensive plan independent of any other entity, or whether or not it's willing to partner with another or other municipalities.
And I rather...
We asked her to reach out to them, which she did. She has not heard back from them. But Radnor was willing to. So based on the recommendations from the experts saying, well, it's better to go into a multi-plan, that's one of the things that we...
How much more expensive was it, Laurie, to go it alone? To enter into a multi-municipal comprehensive plan with somebody who's 100 miles away. So it wouldn't make, I mean, it's good to partner, but the partnership has to make sense, right? And, you know, I just, somebody's got to explain to me whether the time it's going to take for two of us to do this thing together...
But I think it's, perhaps it's a willing partner.
...the benefits we get, because we haven't done a comprehensive plan in 20 years. And now, a year ago, we said we committed money in our budget to doing that, and we haven't done anything since. Laurie, how much would it be to go it alone?
It depends upon the level of detail, but what the planner that we consulted with recommended was that if you did basic levels of analysis for Haverford only, it would be about $50,000 to do it alone. But again, that's a basic job. Haverford and Radnor with, in combination with the MAP grant, we would be able to do it for between $120,000 and to $150,000, and that provides for additional or further detailed analysis. It gives you opportunities to have focused studies on specific areas of your interest. Haverford Township, without the MAP grant, he was projecting that the potential fee would be $90,000 to $100,000. And again, that's basic. That's going back to what some of the basic analysis is.
You lost me. Is it more expensive to go it alone?
No, less.
It's more expensive to do it jointly than it is to go it alone?
Well, if you go it alone and you don't get the MAP grant, then the fee is the same as if you join with Radnor and you don't get the MAP grant. Really, you're just talking about, it's the competitive edge for the MAP grant.
By doing it together.
Right, that becomes the enticement.
Yeah.
Mr. Siegel?
I have a simpler question. Why does this require a vote of this board? This strikes me as something that we've budgeted the money. It's the sense of the board. We could do it through resolution, but I don't know why we need a motion and everything to pursue a plan that's already in the budget and approved.
You are required to do it. Initially, we were talking about doing a Haverford Township comprehensive plan, so if we're changing direction, it's not something I believed was something that I could just do on my own.
Right, and the expenditure is over $10,000.
I don't disagree with you, Dan, that it should be within the, we've taken all the steps, but it is something that should be talked about out loud, even if it's just at the end of the day, we ratify or don't ratify the plan they want to take. I'm just, I'm, I just don't see this, I don't see the connection and the synergy between us and Radnor, and I'd like us to try harder with Marple or even with Upper Darby, who share huge existing or potential business areas for us, you know, borders with us, before we commit to doing, I mean, it's a one-time kind of irreversible commitment to going down that road with Radnor, so.
It is my understanding that you did reach out to the other municipalities. It's not a case that you, Radnor is the one that responded and is willing to go along with it. That's my understanding is why we are including Radnor.
Did we reach out to Radnor, or did Radnor already have a relationship with this plan, or was he already doing something with Radnor?
I don't believe he's doing anything with Radnor right now. I mean, I know that Radnor's got a steering committee who does it for the comprehensive plan, and I know that they're interested in pursuing the comprehensive plan. But that's for, I think, they don't even have the funds allocated this year. That would be for next year's allocation. So they're, they've not engaged in any of the work on the comp plan yet. We have an allocation this budget year.
Yeah, already allocated, and so basically, I mean, already raised, and that, that right there establishes an issue. We will be, anybody we partner with, we're at the whim of their board deciding to budget this or not budget this, and their own board's misgivings to whether they want to do this or whether they want to do that. One of my concerns about a multiple municipal comprehensive plan, even if it's with one partner, is that we have, the nine of us have obligations to the 53,000 people that live in Haverford Township and no one else. And I am concerned about the absolutely necessary compromises we're going to have to make with another township in order to try to have some, you know, multi-municipal comprehensive plan. In the meanwhile, we haven't had one for 20 years, and we already know now we're a year behind on the budgeting with Radnor.
Okay, so you said we don't need a resolution, just do, if you feel a multi-plan is necessary, then do it. You don't need it. We don't need a resolution. So, right?
For the record, if we could stop referring to Laurie as she when Laurie's in the room...
Mr. Solicitor?
Okay.
Solicitor, since I made the motion and it was seconded, we just said that we really don't need a resolution for this. Can we...
Withdraw the motion.
All right. Good luck, withdraw.
You want to withdraw it?
Yes.
There was a seconded on that.
Okay.
Mr. Aliva?
Yeah, it's fine with me withdrawing.
Just so I have this straight. You're tired of this discussion, so now you're just directing Laurie to do whatever Laurie thinks is right.
Did I say that?
I'm asking you.
No.
Would you just do that?
No, I'm not tired of it. You want to go on and on and on? Larry, go ahead.
There is a motion on the table right now. Gentlemen, gentlemen, there is a motion on the table right now to withdraw.
Why don't we just take the motion?
So...
Why don't we just vote on the motion?
Yeah, we're just going to...
Withdraw.
Take the... Do you have to take the roll for it?
Is this to withdraw?
This is to withdraw.
I don't know why we just don't. You don't need a motion to, you don't need us to vote on a withdrawal. The guy who did it and the guy who seconded it withdrew it, right? It's not tabled or anything, it's just withdrawn, right?
Okay.
That's right. Next up.
Okay. Item number 23 is library.
Mr. President, make a motion to authorize the Township Manager the authority to execute agreement with the Haverford Township Free Library to utilize the township buildings located at 2325 Darby Road during the period of library renovation of the Mill Road facility. The buildings to be made available for temporary administrative offices and temporary library services to the residents of the township.
Second.
Taken up by Mr. Lewis.
As you recall, we discussed this last week. This gives them the opportunity, should their planning needed, these buildings would then be available as part of their planning for the closed period in 2017. And I thank you for your support.
Did we talk about the cost of this, Larry? Are you running into that? Did we, I forget?
This is just authorizing him to enter into an agreement.
So you're going to agree with, you're going to try to make, okay.
Yeah, so we'll discuss.
Okay. There's only one thing that bothers me about this is executing of the agreement. That means that this board isn't going to vote on that agreement. That is, it's, in this vote, we're allowing Larry to make that decision. Is that what we want to do?
Right, and he's allowing them to use the facilities.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with Larry. He's a good negotiator.
It says execute an agreement, so...
Well, we're going to, I mean, there'll be some type of document that I'm sure Mr. Burn will put together. It'll probably be a dollar lease for whatever.
But do we want to, what I'm saying is, do we want to be the ones to approve that document, or do we want to just let Larry do that?
I think you're doing that tonight, if you say yes.
I, that's what I'm saying to you.
Yeah.
I'm saying if we do that, Larry can execute the thing. What my question is, do we want to do that? Or do we want to look at the agreement and then vote on that agreement?
I think there's two aspects to your question. I think there's a political aspect to it, and there's a legal aspect to it. It is our township building. If it has, by definition, value, that the executing of an agreement with this would, you know, would represent some loss to the township of some amount of money that we could rent to somebody else for a higher amount of money, you know, we need the solicitor to tell us that the Township Manager can do that without coming back to us in the same way that the Township Manager has a duty to come to us anytime he tries to spend more than X amount of dollars on a contract.
Correct, yes.
Then number two, the political issue simply is whether we want to see, and I don't say political in a nefarious way, but the issue is to whether or not this board wants to see the agreement or comment on the agreement or talk publicly about the agreement before it's entered. I don't, as long as neither thing, I mean, the solicitor should be able to answer the question quickly for us as a board as to whether or not there's any legal ramifications here of the township entering into this contract with the library and whether the manager can be delegated that task, no matter what the parameters of the agreement is. You should be able to answer that question. I mean, not right now, but, you know, get us an answer to that question. As long as, you know, we could talk about it here at a meeting before it's executed, as long as it just doesn't hold up for a month, whenever we come to the time when the library needs to act.
Right, right. The library is not going to be able to act for at least a year on this agreement. They can't, because we're going to be occupying this building for almost a year. So it may be good for us to just look over the document. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I don't have any...
I'm sure, you want me to chime in? I'm sure that I would be discussing some of these documents in an executive session if there's a legal, if it's a legal agreement.
Right. It's a legal matter, so...
Well, it's also a lease, too.
It's a lease, so it's real estate as well, so we would discuss it in...
I get you. I know what I'm saying, but I think that maybe that, the public should be able to look at the agreement.
Board approval for the manager so that they can begin their planning process.
Right, exactly. The most important thing right now is that there's not, there's not a worry a month from now, or two months from now, or six months from now, or a year from now.
They have an operating budget to come up with for 2017.
Right. They need to come up with what they're going to need. We need to know what we're going to do with our property. They're going to, you know what I mean? So it makes perfect sense to be talking about this in September of 16, but as far as the agreements, sure, we could see them whenever you have them.
Whether the library chooses to use the property come that time is beyond it. So this is saying that...
Every time we have an agreement, we bring that agreement in front of the board and in front of the public, so the public can review that agreement in case they have any questions on that agreement. That's all I'm saying. I'm just saying this is taking a different tone than we normally go through. So this is allowing him to execute the agreement, and then we're done.
Was it that specific? I mean, we're...
It says execute an agreement.
Oh, I understand what the words said. Was that, was that the intention, or was, I mean, the overriding goal here was to make a commitment early that we do this, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so I mean, whatever the language is, the...
Well, you as a lawyer know that it, that's all, you know, the language is all of it.
Right, no, I know, I know, but for the purposes of the public, so they can understand why this is coming up now when we're talking about we're going to be here for a year. It is to, it's to make the commitment on our board's part that this is a, that this is an arrangement we want to commit to. We're going to vacate our space. They're going to start a serious renovation. They need space. This is the perfect solution for them, whatever could be worked out. We're responsible for 80% of their operating budget anyway in a typical year, so it's not, there's nothing unusual about this.
And the term is used.
Also means they never have to go look, talk to anyone else.
Well, no, I think the wording is there. We don't know what the agreement's going to be. Is it going to be a rental? Is it going to be a lease?
Right.
This gives him, this gives him the flexibility. We give him the approval now to execute whatever type of agreement comes forth. You can approve that.
Reality is, he's going to discuss it with the board in the executive session.
Yeah, and be done in the executive session.
Can we change that word?
And be fully disclosed to the public.
Can we change that word from execute to negotiate? Does that make it any better?
Sure.
See, that would make it, that would change the wording and then that would bring it in front of the board.
Yeah, Mr.?
Do we actually have a motion? This is just, other than what's written on the agenda, we don't, it's not like we're talking about an ordinance or a resolution.
If you just give them the approval that they're, if the board just approves that we're going to lease it to the library, that's fine. If there's a commitment now so that they can do their planning, they can put in their grant that they're going to use those facilities, they can do their budget for 2017, knowing what their rental expense was going to be or not going to be, that's what we're looking for. It's all our money anyway, because as Mr. Holmes just said, we give them 80% of the budget anyhow.
Yeah, I agree with you, Bill. Bill, I'm not disagreeing with you, and I support the library. I'm just saying that we need to...
How about a motion is that the Board of Commissioners commit?
We need to, we need to have this as, you know, as public, so the public understands what's going on with this.
And we don't know what type of agreement it's ultimately going to be based upon.
Exactly, so...
Yeah, that's what I mean.
This is a scaled-out version, a scaled-down version of the library when they scaled down, right?
Yeah. We're, they're going to try and offer as much services as humanly possible is one of their plans.
Going to do that, and here.
As much as possible, not all. I, whatever, if, once we give the approval on this space, they now, once we approve it, they know they have 8,000-plus square foot of space, they can put that plan together, then they'll come back to us and tell us exactly what services they can provide.
What about the cost to do that? Is it in that seven and a half million? You didn't say where it was coming from.
Yeah, I mean, they had $300,000 of rental expense that we don't want to pay to an outside vendor. They've been looking at other properties. Since, our suggestion was to delay the renovation until after the township vacates this property, so we don't have to pay somebody a couple hundred thousand dollars. Why waste rent? I'd rather have the $3,000 go back into the technology budget if we have the space available.
Okay, so to be clear, you're saying they have $300,000?
There was $300,000 in the construction budget.
For moving expense.
For rental expenses.
Rental expenses.
So, all right. You know that, Larry?
Yeah, it was in all the presentations we sat through.
Well, that's why you should negotiate, now.
All right, so that...
Negotiate, there we go.
Mr. Wexler?
That's the better word, negotiate.
You wish to change the word from execute to negotiate?
Fine.
All right, Mr. Lewis?
Second.
As long as we have the approval.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's something missing here. I mean, first and foremost, our motion, I mean, we as the board are agreeing to provide our township buildings to the library, right? So...
Temporarily. Obviously.
During the period of renovation.
Right.
So long as we're out of it.
Couldn't we do something, can I, can I speak, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely, Mr. Solicitor.
Could we do something like, that we agree to rent the facilities to the library subject to an appropriate agreement being negotiated and reviewed by the solicitor?
That's much better.
Yeah, perfect.
As long as the township tonight is making a commitment to the library that we're making the space available to them, so they can stop looking for other space and stop wasting money.
I like the way you worded it. Good.
Call a question.
I wish Gloria had done it that way, too. I wish Gloria had worded it that way as well.
Read it out on how you want it said. Mr. Solicitor?
Okay.
Yep, read it out so everybody understands.
Can you play that back? Can we play the tape back?
We've all heard it. We've all voted for it. It's on tape.
I think I said that...
I've asked the solicitor to please word it.
That it was a motion to authorize the township to rent the space to the library subject to a satisfactory agreement to be negotiated by the Township Manager reviewed by the solicitor.
Mr. Wexler?
Second.
Mr. Lewis?
Second.
Take the roll.
Thirty seconds.
Mr. DiMilio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yeah?
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connel? Yes. Item number 24, the continuation of citizens forum for non-agenda items. Is there anybody on this side of the room? Anybody on this side? Yes. Well, non-agenda items.
Yes, come up here.
Come up here. Please come at the podium, ma'am.
Hard Matter 545 Lawrence. Just kind of asking what the status of Eagle and Lawrence Road is with Pendoc and the work that's supposed to be done there. And also, too, is there going to be some discussion about the traffic light situation there, as well as the signage? I live on the Y side of Lawrence. Crossing Eagle Road can be hazardous, because people come down that hill like crazy and make a left turn onto Eagle, and they don't care whether you've got a green light or not a lot of times. And I'm just concerned about, there is no sign that says left turn yield or anything along those lines. And that's really about it on that. And then the second thing would be, we've had a street light out in front of our home since the storm. I don't know who's responsible for that.
What's the exact address here, sir?
545 Lawrence. Pendoc, Pendoc came out. They couldn't make their way up the pole because they declared it unsafe. The pole has been replaced, but then they have not redone all the work up there that needs to be done, so they can take out the old pole. But we've been without the streetlights since as well. The other thing I have is, I want to thank the Township for Penzy Trail. It's a great opportunity for us to walk. My wife and I walk four or five mornings a week, and it gets us off Eagle Road and so forth. It really is a great addition, and I wanted to thank the Township for doing that, so.
Thank you. This side of the room? You were asleep, weren't you? It's three minutes, okay? Three, that's it. I want you to have your right to speak, but please.
In the past few weeks, I've gotten into reconstructing the curb on Arlington Road. That curb goes very deeply. There's a fossil curb under there that we're having difficulty in getting out. I've been informed of the need to dig that in approximately 10 to 15 inches, four inches above ground, at least 10 inches below ground, maybe more. It's very difficult to get out a segment of that. We didn't put it in, we didn't take possession of that property with the notion that there was anything down there but a real curb. I want to know whether the Township... I want to know whether the township was going to assume any responsibility on Arlington Road particularly, which is a state road, for some of this buried curb that's beneath the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Levin. All right. Well, it's Public Works. What their issue is, I know it's PennDOT.
Yeah, it's a state road, and they're responsible for curb to curb. Residents are responsible for curbs or something.
Mrs. Widow? Gentlemen from 545 Lawrence Road, about the Eagle Road and Lawrence Road update, anything on? Mr. Pinoni? I can flip a coin. And the traffic light?
Yeah, we just conferred on it. PennDOT did get their, PennDOT issued the permit about two, three weeks ago. YMCA has a job out for bids, they should be getting the bids in this week, because we are part of the lease with the YMCA. We will review, if this is the right way to say it, we'll review those bids as I receive. Your question about the sign is, I don't know. I mean, it's been a little while since I've looked at the signal plan. I don't, I just don't know to answer your question about the left turn. If you contact Lori or something, maybe I could, we could double-check the signal plan. But I don't know, I think the gentleman, whoops, he asked about a left turn, a protected left turn coming out of Lawrence on Eagle, and I just don't remember if that's part of that application or not.
Okay, anything further? All right, sir? Okay. All right, moving on. Number 25, new business. Does anybody have anything for new business? I do have one thing for new business, and that is actually for a request by the president for a, I guess, representative, or not necessarily a committee, for the Haverford Alliance for Drug Awareness. I am requesting that one of our commissioners, actually two, a backup as well, present ourselves along with the Haverford Alliance for Drug Awareness. Mr. McCluskey has absolutely wished to take that position, that lead on that, and with the board's approval. And as far as a backup goes, I'd actually like to be backup with Commissioner McCluskey on that. But I think because of this situation, it warrants our, this is, to me, it's a priority, and I think our board really needs to show representation here. Mr. McCluskey, you have anything you want to say further?
Sure, and I'm going to talk a little bit about some of this stuff in other business in closing remarks, but thank you to you, Mr. Connell, for your dedication to this and your commitment to it. And I think it is important that the board show sort of its commitment to addressing the issue within our community and have a liaison to this group. But it's really to the issue, and it's something that we can be involved in community conversations with, with the police force, with EMS, and with residents. And I think this is a good step, and I appreciate your support in that.
All right, thank you. So I will take all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And the ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. McCluskey. Thank you very much for that. Any further new business? You don't have any? Okay. On other business, Mr. Demilio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Piggyback off of that, I'm having my September 21 meeting, First Ward meeting, at the Manoa Firehouse at 7:00 PM, and the Haverford Alliance for Drug Awareness will be doing a presentation there. They had come to this board, if you recall, asking for support and to give us a presentation on what they're about, and what they do, and what their experiences are, and they asked if we can get the word out, and I felt this was a great time for them to do that, to talk about what they're trying to accomplish. So I thank them for coming September 21, and I invite the residents to that meeting. That's all I have right now.
Thank you very much. Commissioner McCluskey?
Sure. Briefly, I just want to talk about this past weekend in the Third Ward. There was the music festival on Saturday, and I think it's a great representation of what this community can do when it comes together. There was so many different organizations that were involved with it, from the Civic Council to the Rotary Club, Kelly Music for Life, sponsors, volunteers, a lot of people put a lot of hard work into it, and I think anybody that showed up recognizes that it was a great event. So on behalf of myself, and I'm sure other members of the board appreciate all the hard work that people put into it. Yesterday, at St. Dennis, there was an event that was held in remembrance of 9/11. They had the choir and an entire orchestra play music and sing songs. There was a slideshow presentation. Some of the officers were there, Chief Viola, Deputy Chief Hagan, and representatives of our fire departments, almost the entire station for Beaumont Firehouse was there. And it was just a, it was a very nice event, it was a solemn event, but it also touched on sort of the uplifting spirit of our country. And, you know, 9/11 is something that I know particularly, you know, it's an event that we're all going to remember where we were when it happened. And I just wanted to touch on that event that St. Dennis threw, it was very nice yesterday. As Commissioner Connell talked about, the Haverford Alliance, they have a couple events before our next meeting coming up on September 30 at 5:00. Just a reminder, by the middle school, there's a HOPE vigil. Everybody in the community is welcome to attend. It'll be before the high school football game, and anyone's invited to attend and participate. And, you know, a lot of people, I'm sure, will mention Haverford Township Day. We talked about it a little bit with Mr. Brooks earlier. There'll also be, you know, the unused medication drop box that the Haverford Police Station always has, there'll be a particular encouragement to bring with you your unused medications on Haverford Township Day and drop them there. And finally, sort of connecting prior statements, we've entered into discussions, there's going to be what we're classifying now as a community conversation. The police are involved, EMS is involved, and St. Dennis Church is organizing at their gym on October 19 at 7:30. All will be welcome, and it's a discussion of exactly the issue that Hada is trying to address in terms of the issues with drugs in the community, and sort of a way we can open up the conversation to decrease the stigma. There'll be more details to follow, but given when our next meeting is, I wanted to put the date out there tonight, it's October 19, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Siegel?
Thank you. I just have a couple of items. First, I just want to clarify, because we had a lot of discussion about the bonds earlier. The ordinance, P14-2016, specifically said that it was an amount not to exceed $12,500,000. The report in the Delaware County Daily Times said the same thing. It said the township was looking to borrow $10 million, even though the parameters ordinance commissioners approved affords flexibility by allowing up to $12.5 million. And if you take the $12.5 million and divide it by the roughly $18,000 tax-paying households in the township, that comes out to $25.83 a household, which, while not exactly doing it through the media, does give residents an idea that that's what Ms. Cuthbertson said are very close. The only other two items I have are that we will be working on with Commissioner McCluskey, a joint constituent meeting, and we're hoping to schedule that sometime in October or November. And finally, when we, by the time we convene again, it will have passed the Jewish holidays, and I'd like to wish all who observe a sweet and happy, healthy New Year and an easy fast.
Thank you. Commissioner, Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I've updated Fifth Ward residents about this, but I want to make this board aware, and also the township residents aware, of the impending closing of the College Avenue Bridge. And I'll just read from an email I got from George Gumas. PE, who's a PennDOT consultant on this project, and he writes that, "The contract is scheduled to be let on 9/15, following letting the actual notice to proceed for the contractor is scheduled for 10/31. This is the date when the contractor can begin work on the project. According to the pre-bid construction schedule developed for the project, the bridge detour would be implemented starting in the second week of November." So we can look for that bridge to be closed and the detour routes to start sometime in early November. He goes on to say, "The project completion date is currently set for November 8, 2017", so we're looking at roughly a year's worth of construction. And this is based upon the pre-bid schedule and is subject to change prior to the award of the contract. There are no, I asked him if there are any incentives to finish early. He said there are no incentives to finish early. Once the project is awarded, the contractor must complete the project by the completion date unless there are unforeseen delays, issues which would justify a time extension. So you recall, we were successful in getting, the PennDOT had not originally planned to have a sidewalk on either side of the bridge, and we were able to convince PennDOT that there should be at least one sidewalk. One sidewalk has to be eliminated, because they're making room for a left turn queuing lane, which is much needed, so, but there will be a sidewalk, which is great news. And Commissioner McCluskey and I will be working with our township manager and Chief Viola and others in the police department to try to mitigate the impact. This is clearly going to be very disruptive for a lot of people for a long period of time, to be followed up by the Ardmore Avenue Bridge closing right there, right a year from this November. So, anyway, just want to make sure our residents are aware, so they can plan accordingly. Obviously, safety is priority number one. We want to make sure we get through this without any injuries to anybody, and we're certainly going to do our best, the best we can to do that, and everybody's going to have to exercise some patience, and that's not always easy, but, so that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
I just want to follow up on what Commissioner McCluskey said about the HOPE vigil on Friday, September 30, and even more important, a reminder to folks that the township police department will be collecting unused medications at the drop box at Haverford Police Station. We may not realize that the opioid abuse crisis that we're facing now starts often with the misuse of prescription drugs that we have in our own homes, and it's just not something we think about. But our children get a hold of very, very strong narcotic pain relievers that, you know, grownups know how to use and children don't, and then children ultimately turn to heroin because they can't get those things anymore. I'm wearing a bracelet that was just sent to me over the weekend that states not one more, and we just, we don't want a single more death in this town, we don't want a single more death in Pennsylvania, we don't want a single more death from this. And it's really not something that I gave a great deal of thought about until the group came last month and talked with us, and talked very personally about their own losses, and really opened mine, and hopefully our eyes, to this crisis. I know our police have responded by being sure that they have the necessary drugs available to counteract an overdose when they come upon one, but the most important thing we can do as adults and as parents is keep an eye on our kids and keep out of our kids' hands the tools for them to start down a terrible road toward addiction and worse, toward death. So it's very important that people come out on Friday night, September 30, and show your support for these people who are dedicated to all of our children, and some of whom have suffered the greatest possible loss. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Wexler?
Yes. On September 6, the day after Labor Day, the Ninth Ward suffered the loss of a resident due to an accident at Township Line. The same day, a motorcyclist was also killed on Township Line. Both accidents fell under the jurisdiction of Upper Darby, as they happened on one side, the majority on one side of the line or the other. There was also a third death that day on Township, further up on City Line at 59th Street. To that end, I've met with Representative Santoro, who then pressured Senator Tom McGaragall, and we're having a summit with Upper Darby, Haverford Township, the governor's office, and Pennsylvania Department of Transportation this Thursday, to discuss the issue of speeding and passive controls that we can do along Township Line. Speeding has become a major problem. I don't have to tell the police department, they sit down the end of my street, I back up the Township Line at Morgan Avenue. People that speed up to beat the light, get through the light, and then race down to St. Dorothy's. Unfortunately, one of our residents got a block from his home, similar to the accident that happened in First Ward on Maryland Avenue a year or two ago, and one of our police officers had to go make the notification to his widow, along with the pastor of St. Dorothy's, Father Murphy, there. Very sad time. And then later in the day, about 7 o'clock, a 28-year-old was killed. Somebody came out and pulled in front of a motorcycle on Township Line, which was, he was speeding as well. And, there, so to that end, we are attempting to do something. I think our township manager was invited to the summit, our chief of police, deputy chief, and as well as the chief, Commissioner Chitwood, and the department from Upper Darby are there to get, this has become a crisis along there. We have many reportable accidents along Township Line. So something is being done. We are looking at it. It's a state road, the state has been very receptive to our demands. We're going to have to look at some of our issues, especially looking at left-hand turn lanes out of establishments on Township Line, maybe restricting left-hand turn lanes out of some of our streets coming onto Township Line without traffic signals. So hard times ahead, but hopefully we'll prevent something like this. Also, September 22, I will have my quarterly constituent meeting with the Hilltop Civic Association, which will probably also involve an update to the accidents that happened on Township Line over last week. So, again, September 22, Bonner Firehouse, 7:30 PM, with the Hilltop Civic Association. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Oliva?
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to talk to, but you guys covered it pretty well, about the HOPE vigil going on, something close to my heart, the HADA. I want to remind everybody, it's at 5:00 Friday. So the other thing I want to talk about was Haverford Township Day. I wanted to remind everybody, it's October 1 this year, Saturday, October 1, so come out and have a good time. And as Commissioner McCluskey reminded us, that you can drop off your prescription drugs over there, so we don't give our kids something, you know, begin the vicious cycle of heroin addiction. With that, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. I just want to conclude that, I want to thank the, yeah. What's your name?
Harry Gentile.
Gentile.
I'd like to thank the Gentiles. The entirety would say Gentile.
Gentile.
I'd like to thank Mr. Gentile and his executive staff for all they do in the township, and all the committees that we have that are involved in the township. September is the month that we remember our first responders because of 9/11, and, but there were also many courageous people that day, and there's many courageous people that live among us. I am a flag flyer, and I will say that I have 365 reasons why I fly the flag, not just on September 11 or July 4, because every day, there are, I wake up and know that I feel good, because I live in a diverse and free democracy, and it takes the entire village, this country, to bring that democracy to us that we take for advantage. So if you have an opportunity, fly your flag for 365 reasons. Thank you very much for coming this evening, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. See you next month.